Okay, all right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this, Noel, am you ready? Welcome to County Council Meeting, everyone. We are so glad that you're here tonight. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and start with an opening by Councilman Dave Erickson.
I want to do my opening in the form of a prayer. My Father in Heaven, we're indeed grateful to be able to gather together here at this time. We can talk about the county's business, the county's privileges and rights and the opportunities that we have. We're grateful that we can successfully and honorably govern. We pray that thou would be with us tonight, that thou would inspire and help all those that are speaking, that are sharing, that are making decisions, that will do so under thy direction. We pray for blessings also to be upon those that are, that are protecting us locally and abroad. We pray that also that thou would bless those that are giving of service and volunteering in this wonderful valley and pray that their needs will also be met as well as those that are serving. We again pray humbly for-
Success to befall everybody.
And protection to, to be upon everybody that travels and enjoys this wonderful time of the year and this wonderful valley. We do this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
If you'd stand and remove your hats, we'll have a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Okay, the first item on our agenda is the review and approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. How about the minutes from the April eighteenth, April eighth meeting? Does anybody have a chance to look at those?
I feel dumb making a motion that we approve them because Carl Ward always found something.
I know.
Like, what did I miss? But I'm gonna say I move to approve.
There was one word misspelled, Miss Kitty.
I'll second.
My name, right? You missed it.
I'll second. If it's in second, those in favor of approving the minutes from the April eighth meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, it's reported the County Executive.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under appointments this evening, I would like to share with you the name of someone I would like your advice and consent to appoint as our new fire chief. As you may know, our good fire chief Rod Hammer is planning to retire at the end of June and therefore we've been in the process of recruiting and interviewing potential candidates to fill that role when he retires. His recommendation to us was that we start this early this year so that we could get somebody in place by June 1st. He would like to spend thirty days with that new chief to be able to train him and introduce him to key leaders and other fire agencies around the county and make sure he's ready to hit the ground running at July 1st after our chief retires. So we started that process a couple of months ago. We posted, we solicited applications, received a number of those. The Human Resources Office screened those and determined the most qualified candidates. Chief Hammer also helped us with that screening process and we determined a number of candidates who were worthy of interview. We interviewed them, conducted multiple interviews, and then the hiring committee, which was composed of Chief Hammer and myself, Dirk Anderson, my chief deputy, and our HR director, Amy Anderson, Amy Adams, sorry, wrong Amy. The hiring committee unanimously was in support of one candidate moving forward to a second interview, which we conducted last week, and after that one was also unanimous in support of extending an offer to that candidate. And his name that I'd like to present to you for advice and consent is Brady George. Brady actually lives here in Cache Valley but works for a fire agency in the Boise area and has approximately thirty years of experience in the fire service, ranging from small volunteer operations to very large fire agencies such as Salt Lake City. He has all of the certifications we would want to see and the education and gave some very impressive interviews, which demonstrated to us that he has the capability of stepping into this role. I told several people going into this that I was, maybe I had a little bit of a negative attitude because I thought there's no way that we're gonna find somebody as good as Chief Hammer and I, I know that's still not possible. He has some really big shoes that are left to fill, but I, I think this candidate that we found, Brady George, is the next best thing and I think he'll do a fantastic job. So it is the recommendation of the hiring committee and of myself that, that we hire Brady George to fill that role as our next fire chief. And so I would present his name to you for advice and consent at this time. His resume was shared with all of you in your packet for you to review as well.
Okay, thank you. He's not here tonight, is he?
I did invite him to come and he was trying to make arrangements to do that, but unfortunately he had too many other commitments with his current job and was not able to be here. So I will get him here as soon as we can to introduce him to you.
Okay, is there any discussion by the council? Someone wanna make a motion?
I move to approve the appointment of Brady George as the new fire chief, as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and is there any further discussion? Okay, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. And like I said, I'll, I'll get him here as soon as I can to meet you. He was hoping to come to our Fire Board meeting earlier today as well, but had other Thank you very much for that. Speaking of Fire Board, I do have a couple of other quick items to report. We had a Fire Board meeting just prior to this meeting and we welcomed our four new members to the Fire Board, our, our mayors that we added to the board from Smithfield, North Logan, Nibley, and Hiram. And I just wanna publicly again state that I'm thankful for their willingness to serve. There's, there are a lot of challenges to be faced by, by that board. Organizationally, we have some things to get in order, so I appreciate their willingness to step up. I also appreciate Catherine Buse's willingness to step up as our new chair of our Fire Board, so thank you Catherine for being willing to take over that. I've been in that role for four and a half years now and feels really good actually to hand the reins over to you now. So thank you very much for being willing to serve. Also, today, earlier today, met with Congressman Moore as he was in town and a number of our agricultural leaders to discuss the, the needs of our agricultural community here. Just wanna express my gratitude to Congressman Moore for taking the time to come and to learn more about the needs of our community and especially that very important segment of our community and our economy, our ag producers. And then I'll just share one more thing, sorry, I have, I have a lot of stuff that's been going on, but just trying to pick which ones are most important to share. I'll mention one last one. We had our RAPS committee meeting yesterday, our Restaurant Arts, Parks, Zoo, and Recreation Arts, Parks, Zoo, and Restaurant Tax Committee meeting yesterday. That's an annual meeting of that body. And we, we had a tall task before us because we had ninety-eight applications, which was about twenty more than last year, a record number of applications for grant funds from those Rest and Restaurant, RAPS and Restaurant Tax Funds. We only had about five million to distribute, but about eight million in requests and the committee went through all of those hundred applications and sorted through them, made recommendations, and we will at your next meeting have a formal recommendation for you to consider for the distribution of those RAPS funds of approximately five million dollars worth of those RAPS funds. We, we approved a recommendation yesterday that uses all but about fifty thousand of the fund balance. I'm going to meet with staff between now and three weeks from now at your next council meeting to see if we can potentially withdraw some of those county applications and use other funds for fulfilling those because it's nice for the council to be able to have some flexibility in, some flexibility in extra funds to be able to, to fund other things that might come up through the year. Right now, there's basically nothing left, but I do think there are some opportunities for us to maybe fund some of our county applications with other sources of money to be able to give the council some more flexibility and have more funds left over in, in case another need should arise. So we, we may have some different suggestions or some withdrawn applications maybe before the final request comes to you in a few weeks, but we'll, we'll have some discussions and see if we can work that out. And that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Executive Zuck. Okay, let's, we'll turn our next item on the agenda is our decorated leader of the Bear River Health Department. Thanks, Jordan.
I hope I can live up to that. As required in state code, we're required to report the outcomes of the Health Department to the counties and the municipalities which we serve. And so we passed out this report. For those that are in the audience that want to view the report, we, we don't print that many, but it's on brhdut.gov if you'd like to check it out. Esti's gonna, first I wanna thank Esti. Esti put all this together and I get to present some of it, but I'm gonna let her present the majority of it. I just wanted to share real quickly, if you turn to page one, that graphic right there is our overall strategy as a department. Really consists of four things and this report seeks to reflect outcomes for each of those four areas. First, we strive to be a great organization. We believe if we're a great organization, we'll be able to recruit great individuals to work for us, to serve our communities, and by being a great organization, partners will wanna work with us, which is our next strategy. We cannot do public health on our own. It requires so much from so many different agencies and organizations in our community to accomplish the outcomes of public health, that community partnership is a key part of that. And when we partner with individuals, we create opportunities, opportunities for individuals to live the healthiest lives they can and for our community to thrive. And that leads to the next thing, our last thing, which is we care about health outcomes. We care about having healthy people. At the core, our community is made up of people and the health of, of those individuals is the greatest asset that our community truly has. So that's our overall strategy and I just wanna share that with you. We went through a process this last year on page two of refining and, and being a little bit more clear with our team and our community about what, what needs to drive us as an organization. So we, we developed, we refined our core values of integrity, respect, and commitment. Building upon those core values and when they're operationalized, it allows us to provide excellence in the delivery of the ten essential public health services. And I won't go into the details of the ten essential public health services, but it all relates to what I just talked about, helping people have opportunities to live the healthiest lives they can. And our, our revised revision, our revised vision is healthy people in thriving communities. And I just wanna share this one, one aspect of what is a thriving community. Our report, in the report, we said thriving communities encompass physical health, emotional wellbeing, economic stability, and social connections, creating an environment where individuals and families can reach their fullest potential. That's what we're striving for, that's what our vision is, and that's what we're working towards, to be a great organization and see those things come together. I wanted to touch briefly on, that, that yellow section is on being a great organization. I think having those values and mission and vision are important. The other side of that is kind of the financial report for, for you all, and these numbers are from our audited 2023. The biggest change that, that we're seeing is actually under that category of, of expenses that you see that would be called Health Strategy Services. The majority of that for this next year is gone. We've received a, a reduction and went through a recent reduction in force as a result of that, so our overall budget will be reduced over the next, over the next year, and we've been able to absorb that and we're doing fine. What I do want you all to know, because it was on your radar, you guys approved an inter-local agreement for us to move forward with hiring a Director of Behavioral Health. Literally the day that we got the news that the, the cut to the funding came and I knew that we were gonna have to cut staff, we had just finished our interviews for that position. I called David Lee and Bill Cox, who are the elected leaders that sit on the board, and said, "This feels wrong to move forward with a position when we're cutting others. I think we can find ways to fulfill the responsibilities at that position without creating another position." They got behind that and that's what we're working towards along with Bear River Mental Health to see how do we fulfill the statutory obligation that we have under code without having to bring on another position in the midst of that reduction. So I wanted to just bring you up to date that we aren't currently moving forward with the hiring of that position, that we're trying to ensure that we can fulfill those responsibilities in other ways. So with that, I'm gonna let Esti Hunt finish off the rest of our report.
All right, thanks for having me. We thought it was, or I thought it was probably fitting for our, our Health Officer to talk about with a great organization that he, he leads us as, so I'm grateful you could do that. But I'm gonna just quickly talk to you about the four, or the other three remaining parts of our strategic plan. So the second one that's in here, that's in the red, is the community partnerships, and we just wanted to tell you really quick about, I didn't even move that down, probably, the community partnerships. We wanted to let you know that this is, this year we chose to talk about seven coalitions that were formed due to the opioid prevention funding the, the county has given us, and that funding has allowed us to expand our, our coalitions. We had, used to just have one coalition in all of Cache County, one in Box Elder, and I don't even think there was one in Rich, but we've now got seven, all geographically placed, so that they can actually serve these communities in ways to help youth prevent substance misuse or abuse. So those coalitions were formed and we figured that was a really good thing to talk about in regards to community partnerships because there are community members, stakeholders such as representatives of schools, libraries, law enforcement, nonprofits, and parents all engaged in these coalitions. And today, they are all growing, considering that it's been a year that they've been building, it's pretty impressive what's happened with these coalitions. So that's a highlight. You can see our, our Bear River Health Department Coalition Coalition coordinators there on page five, and, and that's the one we chose for community partnerships. To learn more about them, you can scan the QR code and learn more. The access to opportunities this year, we chose to focus on the WIC program. The WIC program was able to move from an offline card to an actually online card this year, so it increased access to services because people are now able to have that card loaded with the funds that they need to go purchase the items. They're able to more easily use it like a debit card and it's not nearly as inconvenient and people are able to get those services. So that has also, you'll see here in a second, we've seen an increase in WIC numbers, which is a great thing that we're able to have that service to help out the community. One thing that I really did wanna highlight, because I think this is so cool, is our Governing Youth Council kids. I don't know if you've heard about this, but they have been recognized statewide. Our Governing Youth Council is a group of kids that work specifically with tobacco and tobacco laws, and this past year they actually presented to some local legislators and talked to them about the, the need for youth cessation service, tobacco cessation services. And in their talking, actually, that led to the passing of House Bill 128, which allows an increased access to tobacco and nicotine cessation services to youth. They were recognized because of their efforts in getting that even brought to the attention of lawmakers by the Utah Association of Local Boards of Health. They were given an award there and also Governor Cox paid a visit and signed the bill in front with the kids. So that was pretty cool that those kids have made an effort and it was seen statewide and they even have received a little bit of national recognition. So way to go Governing Youth Council. And the reason that's in here is because we have, our, some of our staff are those that lead this group, so pretty cool. Of course, we wanna lead into the Healthiest People, which is shown here with numbers, and you can see as a health district where we lie in causes of death. This is very, this is pretty similar to how it is every year. Not much has changed, so if you compare to past to old, it's, or past to current, it hasn't changed a whole lot. More along the lines of each county is on page number nine, where you can see Cache Income and poverty are the, two of the biggest public health indicators, and Cache, we do know, is lower than the state when it comes to, which does mean all of these other ones are too. But here in the northern, or northern Utah, we are lower with income, with, with the state average for income, and Cache is doing well in comparison with thirteen point one percent, or not as well, I'm sorry, with, with thirteen point one percent. So it's a little bit higher in regards to poverty compared to other places in the state of Utah. If you turn that page over, you can now see specifically services that were offered during our past year and the things that we saw a big increase in. And one thing I just wanted to touch on is a huge increase was seen in the high-risk expectant mothers visited by a Bear River Health Department nurse with a hundred and sixteen percent increase. That's awesome in the way of us being able to get upstream when it comes to public health and helping these people on an individual level in hopes that we can get ahead of some issues in the future. We also saw over here with WIC, the WIC program did see an increase, I did let you just know that. It doesn't have to do with the fact that it is online now, but that service does allow us to continue with the same amount of staff able to operate under that. So environmental health continues to do their job, and specifically you can see the numbers here for behavioral health services. We have seen a decrease in individuals that are provided mental health services. We can't say why, that's just something we have seen this past year. Yeah, so that is us in a nutshell. Actually, one more page, if you'll turn it over to number twelve. Page number twelve talks specifically at some community health services that we offer, and one thing I thought was very interesting is that top one talking about diabetes prevention. We do offer a course for individuals that have, are at high risk for type two diabetes, and eighty-five percent of those that actually do complete that course show that they have changed their diet. And I think this is interesting because if you look back at the data, there has been an eighteen point five percent decrease in diabetes in our health district. So I think kudos to that program that has, that has done a lot of work. So anyway, any questions for you? We're over time, but I, we do appreciate you as a council and your support that you give to the Health Department, so thank you so much.
We appreciate you guys. Does anyone have any questions?
I do have a question. I was just looking at the, the, your vaccination chart for two-year-olds.
Uh huh.
Do we track locally the general population vaccination rate for?
Um, I think they do. That is a question I have to bring back to our Nursing Director. What, do you, do you know, Jordan?
So my, you're asking for the-
Like the whole, the general, not just two-year-olds.
Do the two-year-olds that are fully vaccinated? Do you have that, like, the general population now that we're seeing some resurgence of, of?
Yeah, we, we can pull that. And it's, it's not a complete data set, but it's a pretty good representative sample. What, what it is, it's called the USIS, I can forget what it's called, the Utah Immunization Database. And providers, so if you go to your provider, your provider does not have to report to it, it's optional, but many providers do, and so that's how we get that data. So it's not a complete data set, but it's pretty representative of our population and the num, the amount of data. So of those that do report into USIS, we can pull the numbers for our area, and we can look at it by age and we can look at it by the type of vaccine. So, yeah.
Is that something that the general public can look at, or is that just available for?
No, the general public can access IVUS.
It's not IVUS, so it's USIS. Um, no, but we can, they do have some in the IVUS database, which is general, general public. If we wanted to really dig down into our communities, we can look at it like by zip code and things like that, but, but the, the general one would put, you could look at Cache County as a whole. You wouldn't be able to see whether the south of the valley or the north of the valley differ, which we could if we pulled the data from USIS. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Who needs? Thank you.
I have one question. On the drug court, what happens to those who are unsuccessful or non-compliant in the program? Does that make sense? You're talking graduation percent and everything on page thirteen.
Um, I believe that they go back into the court system is my, my understanding, that, that the drug court is an option for them in lieu of criminal penalties, and if they don't abide with the drug court stipulations, they fell drug court and would move back into criminal penalties.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
I failed to excuse Councilwoman Tidwell, who was not able to be here tonight at the beginning, so I apologize for that. And then we have a group of students from Utah State here that we want to welcome. Is Dr. Lucero coming with you?
She's there.
Oh, she, oh, there she is! Oh, I hadn't seen her. We will turn the time over to you. We're so glad you're here with us. We're happy to hear from you.
We need to set up a presentation through Jess. If you're not able to pull it up, we don't have a drive, but-
Andrew should be able to do that for you.
Give me one second.
If the flash drive is easier, we could do it that way also.
I was gonna say, something's happening with the TV screens.
Oh, okay.
Before you start talking, any of you that speak, make sure you can tell us your names and-
Yes, for sure.
Tell us a little bit about yourselves, too.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and introduce us. First of all, I wanna thank you guys for welcoming us today. It's a really great opportunity, just as a resident of Cache County, to get to participate in these larger conversations and get to be in this environment with all of you. My name is Macy Thompson, and this is Cole Larson, and then we have Rachel and Caitlin who are passing out those flyers to you. So just to introduce a little bit about why we're here, we are representing the Social Work Department at USU as well as kind of tangentially the Transforming Communities Institute and also Community Partner Panel, various people that are invested in the research that we've been conducting. We sent out a cross-sectional online survey to spread around the state, but also specifically in Cache County in order to learn more about community attitudes and beliefs on homelessness and also specifically to evaluate community support for the expansion of homeless services in Cache County. So we, our goal in being here today is to engage all of you in just this larger conversation that we've been having within the department with our community partners as well, and then within the Social Work Department. A lot of people have been engaged in this research, so we are excited to share the findings of that with you today. And we have a presentation. Perfect, we'll pull that up. So just to draw attention to what Caitlin and Rachel passed out to you, this is a flyer kind of summarizing the findings of the survey that we released and giving you some demographics of that, and also including some information from various databases about homelessness in Utah. And then also we handed out this, which is a few of the questions that were on the survey that we distributed to community members. So our, our idea in giving this to you was so that you could take a look at these questions and kind of answer for yourself, this is how I feel about these different options or issues, and then later on we'll circle back to it and see what the majority of the county felt in response to those questions as well. Awesome, thank you. I'll go ahead and turn it over- Awesome. Thank you. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Cole.
Just give us, thank you. So, as she said, I'm Cole. I'm a junior in the social work program at USU. For, right now, we'd like to give a little bit of a background kind of on the homelessness issue in Cache County. So we have reported from other sources, 17,385 individuals in poverty. And we also see the employed percentage is 10.8%, which is also represented on your little infographic. A lot of these people are one financial disaster away from homelessness. So some of these statistics are quite compelling. Also, from a person in time or pit count in 2024, so last year, found that 148 total persons experienced homelessness. Pit and time count is a special activity where volunteers go and essentially try to collect data of as many people experiencing homelessness within the state to better determine what resources are needed, what kind of problems are being faced, and also just to know a number, how many people in what areas. So that, again, found 148 total in Cache County. And so obviously, there is a, a number. We see that there, these are all individuals experiencing this problem. And to the right, we have the, from our actual study that we completed in finding the attitudes towards people in Cache County. So 8% of the people who responded to our survey have experienced homelessness themselves. 60% of people personally know someone who has experienced homelessness. And 26% of people personally know two or more persons who have experienced homelessness.
Yeah, to further draw attention to that, we, this is an issue that's close to home for people in Cache County, and I think that this brings attention to that really clearly. This is a quote from the website of the Warming Center that's here in Logan. We've collaborated with them a lot on this project, but they do a lot of vital work already for people experiencing homelessness in Cache County. So we want to draw attention to the work that they're already doing and the ways that they've seen their services benefit those people.
So, this is from our, these are some more of the survey questions, basically showing the degree of support in the community of the expansion for homeless services. The numbered ones, you can also see on the flyer that we sent out, so you can compare your answers to the communities. So 90% agreed or strongly agreed that there should be a 24-hour resource center open year-round in the county. 86% agreed or strongly agreed that there is a need for this resource center for people experiencing homelessness. And finally, 78% agreed or strongly agreed that a resource center would be an effective use of tax money. This shows that there is general support for this sort of, this sort of expansion in Cache County.
So a couple more things from the finding of the survey. 80 cent, 87% of respondents said that they are comfortable with a resource center in Cache County, just in general. 81% said that they're comfortable with a resource center in their city. And then getting a little bit closer to home, 54% said that they're comfortable with a resource center in their neighborhood. And then 34% said that they felt that bringing in a resource center will cause an influx of people experiencing homelessness. So kind of looking at further evaluating these numbers, obviously, there's a decrease in support the closer it gets to people's homes, which is expected. But we still do see a majority of people displaying some comfort level with having a resource center nearby them. And then that 34% worried about that influx of people experiencing homelessness with bringing a resource center in, to me, displays possibly that they do have some level of comfort. They do have concerns as well. But that even, even still, they have some level of comfort, but want those questions answered for them on what that would look like or how that would impact their daily lives.
It was also qualitative data was also collected as part of this survey. And we saw a overwhelming support for expansion of services as well, again, as Macy was touching on, different levels of concern for the, what an expansion of services would look like, how it'd look like with monetary support as well as just proximity of some sort of resource center.
Yeah, so just a few conclusions. So homelessness is increasing in Cache County. The annual number of homeless households served up from 84 in 2018 to 462 in 2023. And kind of that, that poverty line, those statistics that we were sharing earlier kind of indicates where the direction of homelessness in Cache County could look like in the future. As Cole said, you know, people could be one financial burden away from then experiencing homelessness. So there are a couple of other things that we want to point out on this sheet as well. At the bottom of the resource sheet that we gave you, there are resources for connecting with organizations directly addressing homelessness in Cache County already. So I invite you to look at what that could look like of further engaging with those resources. And then also, at the bottom, there is an email address for one of our professors who has been the lead researcher in this project. And she will be developing a full report of the entirety of the findings of this survey and research that can be shared with you guys if you email her. So, yeah, again, we just want to thank you for allowing us to invite you into this larger conversation. It's been a privilege to get to be in our community, to learn more about people experiencing homelessness in our community. They are vitally important members, just as I am. So just appreciate you guys welcoming us here today and listening to the findings of this survey. And we can open the floor up for questions as well.
Yeah. That number from 2018 to 2023 being such a significant increase is, do you have any causation for that? Or are you just reporting on actual, just that's the, what you have collected data for?
Yes. So as far as the scope of our study, our study was mostly to find the attitudes of the community based on homelessness, the expansion of services, causes of homelessness. So more of the attitudes of the community. We did not actually gather. That's more from the person in time count that was done. So, yeah.
How many respondents did you have? And what was your market or how broad was your study in Cache County?
Yeah, so we had 357 respondents from Cache County. There, the survey was also conducted in other counties across the state because of the statewide campuses with USU. But this data that we've presented today is specific to Cache County. We sent out the survey in a bunch of different forms. So we put door knockers on people's doors at their homes. We passed out flyers. We had tabling events. We were outside of grocery stores with iPads and things like that. So, but that total number being 357 respondents.
Follow-up question on that. I was looking at the methodology in income and political beliefs, religious affiliation. It said it largely mirrored the census data, a good cross-section. It did say disproportionately women. Does that mean women responded in greater numbers?
Yes.
Do you know what the percentage was? Percentage of women who responded versus population breakdown?
About, versus population breakdown? I'm not, sorry. But there were about 60% of respondents were women.
Okay. Estimated at 50% of the population, probably.
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions? Yes?
Maybe this is beyond the scope of your study, but I've heard feedback from some people in our community who say we provide more resources to people in homelessness, such as full-time year-round shelter, that we will end up with more people in our community who are homeless. I'm curious what your response is to that assertion.
Yeah, I think that is outside of the scope of our study, but also the scope of me as just a student, not actively participating in, in homeless services as a whole. I can offer my opinion, which may not mean much to you council members. But one of the things that we did find in our survey was the majority of people that were experiencing homelessness, like in the pit count, as we found, are people that are from here. So they're people that, whose families are here, whose jobs are here. Like, we mentioned that 10% of people below the poverty line are employed. And so their homes and jobs are here. They're members of our community. And to me, in my limited scope as a student, that that shows that it's a, it's a here issue. And we can focus on members of our community that need those services instead of focusing on members outside of our community that may or may not engage with that.
If I could add to that as well. So there were many, to kind of validate what you're saying, there are many people who have said that, that exact concern in our qualitative gatherings. As far as what the scope of our study, I would say that there is more to be done. There is more to be researched. There's more to be looked into as far as what it would look like to have a resource center. What, how could we address the community's concerns? And I do believe that this, the study, the data that we have gathered can be a great kickstart and help to understanding what the community's concerns are as well as the needs of persons experiencing homelessness.
I actually had the chance to work with some of the students on this. I was one of the community input people. So I can let you know, these students are very concerned and they were very thoughtful and asked a lot of good questions. So, thank you for that. I just...
I did have a question also.
Okay.
Chairman.
I do appreciate your opinion, so thanks for sharing. Drilling deeper into some of the data, and if it's not a part of the scope, that is a perfectly acceptable answer to this off-the-wall question. But the data point where 78% of the result respondents agree or short, or strongly agree to resource, a resource center is an effective use of my tax money, was there any qualifiers to that question on without raising taxes?
I believe that was the direct wording of the question. So if that, if that answers your question there, that was the direct wording. It would have been something like, I, I'm trying to see if it, oh, so the question is, yeah, number two on the sheet that we handed out to you, a shelter would be an effective use of my tax money. That was the exact wording. We also, it's fair to point out as well, the survey was randomized with two different wording sets. So one was focusing on the wording of a resource center versus the other one, which was the wording of a shelter. And we found more support behind the wording resource center than shelter, even though it was very slight. Still, I think goes to show that there is vast community support for both of those. And there's a general understanding that they're similar. But we did see slightly more support under the wording of resource center.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, that was what I was going to ask, because this says shelter and the data says resource center. But that, that clears that up. Okay, anybody else?
I think we should say thanks to Jess, too, for...
Yes. Stand up, Jess. Dr. Lucero, who is such a force in our...
This is a great experience for, for our students to be, they've been at Nibley City, Logan City, and I'm here at Cache County. So we're glad to be here. Thanks.
Thank you for everything you do in our community.
Thanks for the information.
Yep, thank you.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you, everyone.
I know. Okay. All right. Diana?
We are...
The Board of Equalization. Do we need to make a motion first?
Yeah, I move that we, move into, or, yeah, into Board of Equalization.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, that we move into Board of Equalization. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Diana.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Hopefully, you were all able to access the files I shared. Before you, tonight, we have 19 exclusive use exemptions. And we will, there are five categories, of which you have, should have five folders. Charitable, the charitable hospitals, the charitable, which are charitable medical, and the charitable housing, which is like low-income housing. There's one educational and three religious, which give you a total of 61 that you have reviewed this year. So if you're ready for the, the charitable, of those six, four come with a recommendation for approval. That would be Common Ground Adventures, Outdoor Adventures. They've, they have a, an office building. It's at 67% because there is a, an apartment upstairs at that location. There is the Beaver Mountain location. The bottom is operated as a business by Beaver Mountain. The upstairs is Common Ground. So that is a 50%.
Okay. Does it vote on these individually, or are we going to just take your recommendations as a whole? Okay, yeah.
Let's go through the ones that are just, that are, because, but in the charitable, there, these are two denials that I'm going to recommend. So let's just skip to the Planned Parenthood. This is one that is personal property only, so they rent a location. Andrew informed me that they may be closing that location. That does not affect their exemption for this year, but perhaps will mid-year or next year. Then we'll skip over the fourth and go to Utah Festival Opera, which comes with a recommendation for approval. They have two locations, the Don Sante and the Utah Theater. And then the Whittier Community Center. And they have been approved historically based on the nonprofit rentals, which is 75.5% this year. So those four come with a recommendation for approval. Now, if you want to move to the two that have a recommendation for denial, we have the eternal order of the eagles. I don't know if you're all familiar with that in the, so they had applied subsequent to sending out, we just received their withdrawal. After, I, I sent them the copy of the case on the loyal order of the moose because it was so analogous to that situation. So they may try again next year, but for this year, they did withdraw, so that would be an easy denial. The other recommendation for denial is on USA Project Valor. This consists, so it's located in a trailer park that's owned by someone else. So that ownership automatically excludes the property. So they're like, okay, so we put up this little, I think they called it a boxable. So it's a tiny house in a trailer park. The problem is, is he just built it last year and he had, no financial statements were provided. So in that case, we have to rec, you know, recommend the denial based on information noncompliance.
Okay. Thank you, Diana. I would entertain a motion for that group of the six charitable exemptions.
I'd so move that we approve Common Ground, Utah Festival Opera, Whittier Community Center, and deny Eagles and USA Project Valor.
And you have to approve Planned Parenthood as well.
I'm not going with that one. Someone else can do that one.
Okay. Okay. I have a motion on five of these. Do I have any?
I'll second.
Second? Okay. Is there any discussion? Those who are in favor, indicate?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we still have one. The, the recommendation that you gave us is to approve the Planned Parenthood.
It is. They've, they've received it from before I was here. We have had council members abstain before.
Okay. Can I get a motion on that?
So move.
Is there a second from anyone?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so we have four. Is that, is that three nays? Did I get that correct? Nolan, David, and Mark. Okay, thank you. All right.
Do you vote on that, too?
I voted da, yes. I voted da, yes. Okay. What's the next one?
So where does that leave Planned Parenthood if we're, is that a tie?
You have to have a majority to-
It was, I thought it was four and three. Oh, there's only three.
Yeah, because Barbara's not here.
So it's denied.
Or does it come back to?
I mean, it's just the rules they play by. I don't care what they do. They just play by the rules, the same as everybody else.
They play by the rules, they meet the definition of the law. I mean, they may, their mission may be contrary to many people's personal beliefs.
By the way, they just announced that they're closing their Logan.
Yeah, like, yeah, that's what I said. Andrew had informed me of that. It doesn't affect the current exemption request. If they sell part way, 59-2, 1101, requires us to prorate this year. And if they don't exist here, then of course, we won't see it next year.
Andrew, what is the procedure when it's a 3-3 vote?
Okay, so the motion was to approve the recommendation. So the motion itself failed, so right now, there is no motion before the council. Someone can move to, you know, deny the recommendation. But again, if it's going to be a split vote, it's just a pending item.
So it could be moved for denial, or moved to table it until the next meeting? Would that be correct?
Yeah. Would anyone like to make a motion, or would you like us to continue that?
I mean, it's just a checklist, and they made the checklist just like everybody else.
We'll continue that. Lacking a motion, it's continued. Okay. All right, Diana, what's the next group, the-
Okay, we're moving on to the charitable low-income housing. And I know that we have had, we've had some concern for that in the past, as we have had a few more join the ranks. We have four, Aspen Court, Carl Inaway, Providence Place, Spring Hollow. Carl Inaway and Providence Place are owned by nonprofits, and they have been here for as long as I've been here, providing 41 and 22 units respectively. Then we had Aspen Court join. And so with these, they changed the law in, in 2023, to make it so it, what didn't have to be owned by a nonprofit. They could be owned jointly, or they could receive federal funding that was considered a support, supportive housing. And that's when we had Aspen Court and Spring Hollow join our ranks. Aspen Court is 72 units, Spring Hollow is 50 units. They do meet the, the letter of the law. We've got, so I say Carl Inaway and Providence Place. They are owned by nonprofits and have been operating here historically. Spring Hollow is co-owned with Western Regional Housing, with HUD, Utah Housing Corporation, and Olean Walker, which all of that funding puts them in order they receive funding from federal, state, or local governments. Aspen Court is co-owned by neighborhood nonprofit. They receive funding Utah Housing, and they have rent restrictions. So they technically do apply. I know Sandy in particular had asked me about this the last couple of years. But, so those, they've all checked all their boxes, so they come with a recommendation for approval.
Okay. Does someone want to make a motion about those four properties?
Diana, did I understand you correctly that these have come through and been approved in the past? This is a-
They, they, they have, yeah, so Aspen and-
Carl Inaway?
No, Aspen and Spring Hollow, two years old since the new law, 23.
They were approved last year.
Carl Inaway and Providence Place have been here for longer than I have been, 16 years. But they've checked all their boxes. And provided all their paperwork, so.
It's the law that's flawed, I think, but.
Yeah, I move to approve the four, Aspen Court, Carl Inaway, Providence Place, and Spring Hollow. As presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion about the, these four properties? Okay, those who are in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. Which one's next, the medical ones?
So yeah, moving on to the medical, you have five in front of you. Community Nursing Services, Health West, IHC, Rocky Mountain, and Sunshine Terrace. And we had four onsite hearings. Community Nursing Services, we go to every, like, once every decade. It's a real small operation and very straightforward, where the others are very corporate structure, a lot of changes and moving parts every year. So, so the findings on Health West, IHC, Rocky Mountain, and Sunshine Terrace are considerably longer since we had a hearing that, that was attended by council members. They all come with a recommendation for approval, some stronger than others. Like, IHC really gives a lot to the community, way above what their tax liability is. And the same can be said for Sunshine Terrace. Health West is based out of Idaho. They've recently bought in to the community. They took over Bear Lake Community and Cache Valley Community Healthcare. And so they're offering great services, low costs. And they rent, but their, their model is changing more to leasing a lot of their space. So theirs is a percentage, as you'll see there. The calculation, I think, is the last, in Health West, is the last page in your packet for Health-
20% or something like that.
It was like 19.22% by the time I got done with the square footage. So Health West, there you are, 19.22%. They had asked for 18%, but after we did the walkthrough, it calculates to 19.22, leaving out the common space, which is not allowable by case law. You don't use that in the, in the calculation.
Move to approve Common Nursing Services, Health West, IHC, and Sunshine Terrace, and RMC with reservations.
Second.
That was just on the last one, right?
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve these five property applications. Any discussion? Okay, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And a singular education one, which was Bear Riverhead Start, comes with a recommendation for approval. One location, real and personal property.
Move to approve.
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve the Bear Riverhead Start application. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And the last three, religious, always the easy choice for an approval. So Logan Church of Christ, Mount Logan Baptist, and Prince of Peace Lutheran. All come with a recommendation for approval.
Move to approve said Logan Church of Christ, Mount Logan Baptist, and Prince of Peace.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Enjoy the rest of your meeting.
May I ask you a question?
Oh, yeah.
So procedurally, if somebody, an applicant, I haven't been a part of this before, an applicant does come and checks all the boxes to legally qualify, and we as a legislative body deny that, do we-
They have appeal rights.
They have appeal rights.
They can take us to the, to the tax, the, the tax commission first, which then they can have a mediation. You can waive the mediation, go straight to initial, and then you go to formal. If they, if everybody's still not happy with that decision, formal. And if they don't like that, then they can take us to, starting with Justice Court. Then they're in the actual legal system, so.
We could have litigation.
I'm saying that there could be ramifications. It won't end here.
Yeah.
We can make a motion to table it for a later meeting to discuss, right?
What, is there a deadline on that?
Yeah, is there a deadline? How is that?
So the problem is that, that we're at this date. The law says that we have to issue the decision within 60 days, and I think it's May 1st, and you don't meet till May 13th. So it's a little sticky. Sorry.
Yeah, I, I think, I look at this as something like confirming votes. If they're there and someone's met the obligation, I'd-
I mean, they can't perform abortions here. They only give birth control.
I don't think it's our prerogative to-
Doesn't matter anyway, but.
Take that into our hands, but we can move on.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion to move out of Board of Equalization?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we move out of Board of Equalization. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are way past time for, to set our public hearings. I already did.
Oh, my goodness, are you fast.
Well, I was trying to make sure that I didn't miss, miss the-
Madam Chair, I move to set the public hearing for Resolution 2025-15. Ordinance 2025-16, ordinance 2025-17, ordinance 2025-18, and ordinance 2025-19 for May 13th, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we set all those public hearings for May 13th of 2025. Is there any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, pending items. The personnel policy and procedure, I know Amy's not here tonight. Is there someone from Amy's office that was going to present that? Andrew, you got that for us?
Hand it helping crafts, the additional language.
Okay.
Say, Taylor, have you had time to look it over? And I know that there was people who wanted, just to make sure that you were okay with it, and that's all.
Yes, so we're talking about the-
The non, wait.
The personnel policy and procedure.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, sweet. Yeah, so in short, this resolution was before the council, two meetings ago, I believe back in their last meeting in March. And essentially, it just authorizes non-substantive changes to the Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual. And the way that it's set up now is that the Office of Personnel Management kind of has to essentially make a proposal on what the non-substantive change is. They have to create a record, they send it over to the attorney's office. If they get approval, they log it. There's a record created, essentially, from my understanding. And that's the additional language that's been added. So I think, I believe that would help satisfy, you know, allaying some concerns. You know, what consider, who considers what a non-substantive change, so.
Okay.
Right, so non-substantive change is what that would be, is making sure that the references reference the correct things, making sure that punctuation is correct, that there are no orthographical errors. So just making sure that it's clean and correct.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion about that?
Chair, I'd move to approve Resolution 2025-12.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that we approve Resolution 2025-12, amending the Cache County Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual. Any discussion? Okay, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, Resolution 2025-13, this is from the Bonneville Shoreline Trail. Do we have, Brandon?
Good evening, Chair and members of the council. So I presented this staff report on this last time. I'm happy to handle this however you would like to. If you want another overview of that staff report, or if you have further questions, I'd like to leave that up to you, how you'd like to have me proceed on this with regards to the application for the Bonneville Shoreline Trail Segment Phase 1A that was brought up last time.
Okay, has anyone had a chance to look that over further? And are we ready to make a motion on that?
So, Madam Chair, if I may, I had raised a bit of a question about this last time on the alignment of the proposed trail right-of-way relative to existing right-of-ways of utility or prescriptive right, and how that would, you know, the congruency of everything. I had a conversation with Landis, you know, after the meeting and stuff. Also reviewed the details available publicly online for the trail master plans for the cities and whatnot. The alignment, it's more clear to me that this makes sense. And it is, although there are some other utility right-of-ways in there where this could, and the south section could be realigned to, with the contours of the land, it makes sense not to jog this, unintended maybe, make the trail move down where it will end up in alignment with those other public utility and things later. So the concern I have there is no longer a concern. I did, just a part of that point was, well, what happens if development comes along and is requiring a master trails plans for the cities, that the location of this would not have an impact on what the development would do?
Are you ready to make a motion?
Sure, I, I, I'll make the motion that we approve the, um, hang on, I want to, I've got to get the wording.
Round one.
Nine B.
Round one, there we go, that's what I was trying to figure out. Approve round one of the Northern Bonneville Shoreline Trail Phase 1A Trail Segment Open Space Application.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve Resolution 2025-13. Is there any further discussion? Okay, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that one passes. Thanks, Brandon.
You bet.
Okay. 10A, are you going to present that one, Andrew?
I was going to say, yes. So if you guys will, I believe you guys have the document pulled up. I put both the application itself and attached it to kind of like a vote recording page. Let me pull it up on my side. Yeah, so I believe it was either last year or the year prior, the council passed essentially a change to, I believe it's county code, can't remember the section, but it relates to how local use authority is granted when it comes to certain, certain matters related to alcohol and related beverages. Anyway, the new procedure is, comes to you guys. And under this proposal, or this application itself, I believe it's just a, I have a paper copy here. Comes from Prodigy Brewing, and they just want to host an event called Community Craft Beer Fest. It'd be in Hyde Park. It'd be between September 21st and ending on September 21st, between 12:00 and 5:00 p.m. And they're just applying to approve to, applying to be approved to sell, offer for sale, or furnish beer, heavy beer, or wine. And the county clerk's office that received it, I believe, is recommending that this entity is conducting this for a civic or community enterprise. And, yeah, as from what I'm seeing on this end, you know, I think this is a worthwhile thing, you know, considering that, you know, they are very engaged with the community. So, do you guys have any questions that I might be able to answer?
The applicant is here, correct?
I was going to say, if you guys want to.
I don't know if, we approved this last year. I think you guys did a great job. I don't know if anybody has any questions for either Andrew or the applicant? Okay, I would entertain a motion on that.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and sec, well, you have to suspend the rules. This is an initial.
Oh, okay.
Do you want it to come back before us, or do you want to suspend this?
I will, well, I guess we had the applicant here. We're not asking him questions. So I'll move that we suspend the rules and approve, let's see, what is this? The single-use permit for Prodigy Brewing.
Second, Stan.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, 10B. Good luck with your activity.
Angie's Ed Request Development Services. This is an annexation request that will create an unincorporated peninsula- Angie's Ed request Development Services. This is an annexation request that will create an unincorporated peninsula, which requires acceptance by county council per state law. The initial annexation request was for just the one parcel that's owned by Lowers on the north side of Upper Canyon Road. However, Smithfield City saw an opportunity to annex a couple pieces of their city-owned property and get it within their municipal boundary on the south side of the road. So by doing that, unfortunately, it did create this unincorporated peninsula in between the Smithfield boundary and the Smithfield City property that's being annexed. That particular area of the peninsula, if you can see from the highlighted map that's included in your packet, it is part of a property that takes access from the Lower Canyon Road, so this particular section is fairly steep, not developable, and cannot be, the larger property cannot be annexed from it. So it, it just, because of the topography of that area, just kind of creates this unusual gap between the parcels. But other than that, it couldn't be used for much anyway, so based on that, we would recommend accepting the annexations. I did talk with Justin Lewis with Smithfield City yesterday. He said if there was gonna be any issue or concern that you had in approving that unincorporated peninsula, Smithfield would take their parcels out of the annexation request just to make it flow smoother. Because again, it was kind of an afterthought. It wasn't the initial proposal for this annexation. The only other thing, a full review of the plat has not been done yet. There are a couple of parcels that kind of extend beyond the annexationary that need to be cleaned up and addressed, so the county surveyor and county engineer will continue to review that and get it to the point where it meets the requirements of a final local entity plat. But yeah, with that, again, with per state code, you can either agree to allow the annexation to create the unincorporated peninsula area, or, and I'm sorry, I have island here, but it should be peninsula, or disagree to accept that, so.
I know the two little strips, they are, they're right on the hillside. I mean, they're, nothing they really have.
Yeah, the two little strips that kind of go north and east. Kind of part of the road, but it's, yeah, it's a little messy up there with those boundaries, but again, Smithfield's like, if any of that creates a problem, they're happy to take their stuff out.
Smithfield's total willingness to take that whole road and everything, I think, I'm in favor of it. Therefore, I would move to suspend the rules and pass Resolution 2025-14.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, I had one too.
Please.
So as we talk about accepting the annexation, and we have an unincorporated peninsula, what does that mean further down the road on others? Anybody have an idea? Because I have the feeling we're gonna see some of these again, and I want to know how that provides us discussion on that.
Yeah, a lot of times the law rules on precedent, so, right?
Yeah.
That's what I want to know, so.
Yeah. I had the same question.
I think it's just a case-by-case basis. Like, we looked at the one that was created in Nibley, and we had a question about the ownership of the road, and who would maintain the road, and I think it's just bringing it to us to make sure that we can resolve any of those, those, you know, just rare situations that arise from these, but I don't know. That's a good question.
Taylor, any input?
Yes, so the legislative body, this is a legislative function, so. The council just uses their best judgments, and based on their best judgment, you evaluate whether or not this peninsula will create some kind of burden. It is a case-by-case basis, and because it is a legislative function, you could say yes to one and no to the other, and there's not very much recourse, but you just use your best judgment as to what's in the best interests of the public.
Okay.
I would second the motion that was made.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
That comment allayed my concern. I don't know about yours.
It did.
Yeah.
Okay, those in favor of the motion to suspend the rules and pass Resolution 2025-14, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Who's next?
Okay. So this item is Resolution 2025-16. This came from the Ordnance and Policy Review Committee with a favorable recommendation, and let me pull up my summary on what it does exactly. Okay, so from my understanding, this contract process and management policy has been in the works longer than I've been around here. It was drafted, to my understanding, in consult, in consultation with, with the county executive and department heads and everyone that would be affected by this. And what was explained to me was this essentially codifies more or less pre-existing the way that things function a lot of ways, but just to go over it, this resolution itself puts into county administrative code just a specific section on code, on contract processing and management, which includes establishing clear procedures for processing and management contracts. It defines key terms such as contracts, personal property, independent contractor, et cetera. It outlines the contract preparation and approval process, and it assigns responsibility to county offices, departments, the county executive's office, and the county attorney. It addresses contract amendments, including the requirement for written amendments and the prohibition of procuring new products or services through amendments. It sets forth conditions for contracts required before performance with exceptions for emergencies and exigencies, which are further defined. I was able to, you know, get, help, help further define that, so really good on that front. There are details on payment procedures, including initiation of payments, tracking of payments, and actions to take in case of default or lack of payment, and it requires all contracts include a termination provision and specifies a procedure for terminating contracts. So really, a lot of this, to my understanding, and I'm not a lawyer by any means, but a lot of this is just stuff that you should be doing anyway. You know, like some of the more ministerial stuff when it comes to, you know, tracking, you know, including certain parts of contracts, so. Taylor, if you have anything to add, please feel free.
Sure, just that this has been in the works for a long time to make sure that our contract policy is compliant with state code, that it's workable, that it's, all the different stakeholders, including the clerk, the executive, and all the department heads, that this can work for them. So this has gone through several iterations. We're confident that it will streamline our process and make sure that when a new department head comes online, or a new elected official, for example, comes in, they should be able to read this and have it be clearly and concisely explained how to enter into a contract with the county, what's required, and how to execute that.
Can I ask a question on that? On the Resolution 1.2.3, it talks about the auditor's office to determine whether funds are available before department heads and officials. Is the official in there referring to anything as far as the budget with the county council, or is that solely with the clerk? Does that make sense?
I think so. So just taking a look at that and reading it completely, department and office heads shall certify whether funds are available prior to the execution of all contracts that originate from their respective department that require the county to make payments from county funds. So what that means is that when a department head is thinking of that they're going to enter into a contract, they need to speak with our auditor, who's our manager of finance, to make sure that there's money to pay for that contract. Continuing on, if necessary, departments and offices must coordinate with the auditor's office to determine whether funds are available before department heads and officials certify the availability of funds. So essentially what that's doing is just making sure that there's, we're not binding the county to a contract that there's not money to cover in the budget. So I'm not sure what your, what your question was, that, because the council is typically involved in the budget process. They set the budget. They dictate to department heads what the budget is, and then during the course of the year, the department heads manage the budget, manage the budget, and spend in accordance with what the county council said at the beginning of the year.
Okay, I'm playing with your explanation.
How many contracts are we seeing in an average year, for example? Because I saw the next item was that the county executive reviews all of them. I just, I wondered what the quantity is, or what kind of administrated.
I'll probably be the best one to answer that. I'm not sure who's exact number today.
Depending on the year, it's hundreds. Yeah, we're above a hundred already.
And where?
Over a hundred, hundreds, especially when we get like the rodeo contracts in.
We're four and a half months in, is that?
Like a hundred there.
Can the executive delegate that authority to the department head, or do you, do they need to be personally reviewed? It looks like they do, according to this, right? Is that reasonable?
That's been, that's been available to me to be able to delegate it, and so the fairgrounds ones, for example, that's a huge one, like 200 contracts that come through for the fair and rodeo, and that's one that I have delegated in the past to that department head to be able to sign.
Halfway through 1.2.4, it says the county executive may designate, yeah, designate his signature authority to another in writing, and that was the bulk of the discussion at OMP, was that it has to be documented that the executive has expressly authorized this individual to review and sign contracts on behalf of the executive.
And the intent for that was to allow for that flexibility. If there are a large volume of contracts, still maintain those controls so that there's accountability, so we can figure out and make sure that there aren't any department heads who are signing contracts on their own without prior.
Want anyone going rogue?
And on that note, I'd like to add that I was seeing if Salt Lake County did anything similar, given, you know, we are the only two counties that have this form of government, and the first executive order issued this year was the Salt Lake County mayor delegating her signature authority in very specific instances, so if this is gonna be the case, we aren't gonna be the first by any means, so.
What questions do you guys have? Especially for those of you who are on the OMP committee, are you comfortable with everything? Like, I read through it, and, but I wasn't part of those discussions.
You know, it was recommended by OMP, which really is the three council members unanimously for approval as.
All right.
Recommended to present to the council in favor of approval. So personally, yes, I can say that.
It, it isn't something that just happened overnight.
No.
It's taken a long time.
It's taken a long time.
Okay.
And to get to this, to this point, and I think it's very well written.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone want to make a motion?
I'd move that we, let's see, this one we gotta suspend. I'd move that we suspend the rules and amend the, or adopt, no, approve Resolution 2025-16 as presented.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, 10D, you're still up, Andrew?
Yep, getting all the floor tonight. Yeah, so the next item is Ordinance 2025-14, an ordinance creating and defining the Cache County Surveying Department and establishing the position of Director of Surveying. I was gonna say I had quite a detailed presentation to give on this, but I was gonna say I can sum it up. So currently, Cache County contracts out at surveying services instead of using someone mainly in-house. Like, we don't have a separately elected, just separately from any other office, an elected surveyor. We have the executive surveyor, which is allowed under state law, but the way that things currently operate is we do just contract out since the, there's a provision, state law saying that if the elected surveyor isn't licensed, then you can contract out. It gives you a bunch of options. And the current setup, from my perspective and from the perspective of a number in the county, take that with a grain of salt, from our perspective, the current setup identif, has a lot of inefficiencies, and it can create a lack of service for certain parts of county administration, you know, whether that's, like, for example, the clerk's office, recorder's office, et cetera. Anyway, this just leads to a massive delay in vital county work and service to the public. Something needs to change, and I would like to note that the county council does have the authority to create, modify, or abolish departments and assign functions as per Utah code and by, under the County Optional Plan, AKA the Organic Act. So this is within your guys' authority to do this, from my reading of, of things. And yeah, just to reiterate, the current system has several shortcomings when it comes to service and how it's being provided. So this proposal, so there are two different ones I included, which, the first one is the version that OMP recommended for discussion.
We did not, yeah, for discussion.
For discussion, for discussion, yes. I was gonna say, the one as presented, and I went back and reviewed over it and made some tweaks with it, and so I also included a second version that I also kind of included a little bit more language. A good number of that was just clarifying a lot of legal things, so there weren't conflicts with state law or with other parts of county code. But I also put some more substantive changes in there, which we can talk about, but just wanted to clarify, that's the reason why there's two of the same ordinance there on your guys' side of things.
But OMP has not seen those modifications.
Yes, and OMP has not seen those modifications with the legal tweaking and the few substantive changes I personally, in my capacity as staff, am recommending. So. Anyway, back to the proposal itself, just in general, it would create a surveying department, which would be separate from other departments and offices. It would still be under the county executive surveyor in their capacity as the surveyor. So it would still be an executive function, as in, it is not legislative, is probably the best way to put it. The department would be led by a director of surveying, who would be a licensed professional land surveyor, as per Utah code. The goal under this proposal is to provide fair, impartial, and efficient surveying services to all county departments and the public. In theory, this proposal would reduce, how do I say it? Ensure specialized expertise, increase accountability and transparency, improve resource allocation, and just ensure that parts of our county that need surveying services done efficiently can just have someone in-house to go to. And that brings me to what the current situation is, and, you know, I haven't been close to this problem, and so again, take this with a grain of salt. This is just coming from my side, but from what I can understand, the current reliance on contracted surveyors can be very expensive. For example, one of our, one of our contracted surveyors has to drive about an hour one way to get to Logan, and then an hour back and charge just $250 an hour each way, which, again, I'm no surveyor, but that's a lot of money to me. In short, the contracted surveyors are not, sorry, us contracting surveyors is not meeting all the needs of all the departments, which again, causes delays. In particular, I'd like to say for the county clerk's office and for the county recorder's office. So the answer of, to this would be an in-house surveyor, who, under this proposal, would have a bunch of different responsibilities, and that would include just coordinating, that would also include coordinating surveying contracts. So anyway, my recommendation to you guys, given modifications that I'm personally suggesting in my capacity as staff, as well as the difference between that and the version that OMP recommended for discussion for you guys, my recommendation is that you guys eventually approve the creation of a dedicated surveying department, but for now, I think it would be best for you guys to discuss this matter, give direction, and then I think it would be best to either just leave it with me and, you know, we will counsel, whether that's Jarris or Eric or whoever, to go over and just kind of like go over certain parts of this with a fine-tooth comb, because my version with suggested modifications still hasn't met all parts of legal review, so take, again, that is required for you guys to pass anything, so for now, I would recommend that you guys either send it back to OMP for just a little bit of redrafting, or just leave it directly up to me to work with our attorneys and get that done, taken care of, so. But anyway, that's all I have for the moment.
There was one other option OMP had sent too, right?
Which one?
Well, we don't create a department.
Oh, yes.
Just hire a surveyor.
Yes, so there is that option as well, which is, it would be hiring a surveyor. Yes, so there is that option as well, which is, it would be hiring a surveyor engineer under the Public Works Department, if I recall correctly, and that is technically an option, but this way, if this was created as a department head, this would mean that the county council would have a say in advice and consent to an appointment made to that department, so it would mean that you guys could, you know, have that check and balance and, you know, just ensure that, how do I say it? That the person who is going to be over, who would be over this department, in theory, would be the best person in most of it, you know, just like how we had our fire chief, you know, approved earlier, same thing.
Okay, discussion.
Yeah, any questions for me?
So on the, the difference between version from O M P and the version from staff?
Yes.
Is only the red line detail in the second attachment? And that's all I could see that was different. The red line in the last section. But I'm asking because maybe I'm missing.
Yeah, so the difference between the version that O M P recommended for discussion versus the version that I gave is, well, there were a few, which is, number one, it would have to change up the language as it relates to records management, because state law requires the county recorder to take some of those, some of those duties on, but there would also be another section added that would amend county code under the Public Works Department under two point four six of county code. Right now, it says that it essentially designates some level of surveying services, but if we, you know, didn't modify that, there would be a creation of a conflict between different parts of county code, so that would have to be amended, and there was another section added, and which I spoke with our legal counsel, and they said that this would be better brought forward as a, as a resolution, this part specifically, as it relates to seeing what resources we have as it relates primarily and if, and/or exclusively to surveying, and then going through that process of taking those resources and then, you know, transitioning those over to a newly independently created department. So that would, from what I was told, is that would have to be more appropriately done via a resolution, not necessarily ordinance, so even, I was gonna say, as much as I like to think I don't get things wrong, I still, this proposal that I put forward still needs work as well, so.
Okay, discussion, what do you guys?
I have a question.
Okay.
Do we have anywhere else in the county that we have a department head that's just theirself that's in the department?
Not that I know of.
So what do we look at there for creating a department head?
Taylor?
It's, it's up to your discretion if you want to create the department that way. There are departments that have dozens of employees, and there are departments that have four or five, so. The department head of one, that would be unique, but not by much.
I guess my, part of my direction is, is by title, does that cost us more from a salary?
I don't think it should, and that's what we need some input from Amy before we budget that, but you know exactly how is it going to affect the budget, but from what I understood, it's just going to be what a licensed surveyor would, a salary that's commensurate with that title.
So then the only difference, based on what Mr. Erickson talked about, of hiring somebody, but it's not a department head, is the consent of the council versus Public Works hiring the person?
Not necessarily, because if they're their own department, then they are equally as available to everyone in the county who might need that service, to the recorder's office, the clerk's office, the development services, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't just be so narrowly defined, which, I mean, that may or may not make a difference, but that was, that was one of the thought processes that.
I would like to think when we hire somebody that they're available to everybody.
Yeah, but.
That's what, I'm having that same kind of thing, it should be available wherever the need is needed.
Well, ultimately, you think if you're hired under the direct supervision of somebody, you're pleasing your direct supervisor, right?
You may be available, but your priorities are definitely going to be.
Yeah, your priority will be your supervisor, and the others will be in a secondary position, I think.
It could.
And if we create a department, then we establish a budget for that department at that time, so if it's, the budget is enough for a department of one, that pretty well limits the scope of that.
Yeah, I don't think, just because it's apartment, they have to have staff. I mean, it, we control the budget, so it's, you have a computer and an office wherever you're at, wherever you're at.
And they could have a budget to hire contractors instead of.
Right.
Staff or full-time employees, right?
They don't have to have like an assistant or.
So I, I know one thing that was brought up was, you know, two hundred fifty dollars an hour to travel. I mean, hiring someone full-time has a lot of expenses associated with it, like benefits and retirement time when they're not directly surveying, things like that, so have we, how have we evaluated the cost comparison, or have we yet?
Ultimately, Keegan, I don't think that that is, I think what, in listening to staff, we're more interested in having somebody here available all the time, because somebody traveling here to be available, or they have other clients that they're satisfying, I mean, it's somebody that's here, I think, we're not going to save money, I think when we do a cost analysis, it's ultimately going to be.
That's not the driving factor.
That's not, I think, in conversations that I've had with staff, it's having somebody here within our, you know, within our county structure to be available for the more nuanced and complicated things that are coming to them, so that they don't have to call and either set an appointment or be put on, you know, in queue.
Yes, and maybe that's the red herring then, and then the question then is, I guess, what, how are the inefficiencies or lack of services manifesting themselves right now, and what are the repercussions of the delays or the, like, yeah, what's, what are the consequences of that right now?
I think our clerk would like to speak.
It's mainly, for me, annexations, there's so many annexations that's got bottlenecked right then and there, and we just need someone to streamline that process. So instead of waiting from someone from Kaysville to bring up a M I L R or just to review the plat, we have someone in-house that can do that. There were some annexations I got put on hold for months at some point, and we have a strict deadline of making sure we expedite those annexations.
Thanks. Another question is, what's the percentage breakdown of departments that are utilizing the surveyor's services, like is it ninety percent the clerk's office and?
Yeah, I think.
Percent everything else, or again, I'm just throwing out, do we have an idea?
I would say mine would be very minimal, it's always for annexations, or right now, what we call it, infrastructure financing districts, is also need a surveyor, but those coming, who knows when they gotta show up? I would probably say like the recorder's office uses a surveyor permit more than I do, and then up in development services as well.
Well, there's, you got different things happening. You know, there's administrative things, going over plats, all those kind of things, and then there's actually design and workings and county roads and surveying areas and things like that, that you're working with the engineers more specifically. There's a in-the-field kind of work, and then there's making sure that things are needed for the recorder's office and the clerk's office.
G I S, is it two, right?
G I, yeah, you know, there's, there's just, there's kind of different things going on, and in reality, yeah, we almost need someone to be able to administratively check things, and then we are, still need probably quite a bit of work still done in the field, and when you do that, you're gonna, it's gonna require more like a team, which I worry about, you know, to go out there and, and actually, you know.
Section corners, things like that, it takes usually more than just one person to really do those effectively.
Keegan, I was going to say, it is within your purview as a council member to direct me as your staff to figure out, you know, the usage percentage between services, so I'm gonna say that is fully within your right. I just wanted to inform you that.
Okay, and then, Madam Chair, I do see we have the recorder in attendance, would it be appropriate to hear from her and?
Yeah, we've also got Matt Phillips, who, I'd like to hear from both of you actually, Tanille, do you want to?
Yeah, I mean, I really just want.
Would you come up? Yep.
I didn't really prefer your opinion.
Tell us what you think.
Sorry, you can blame me for putting you in the hot seat, but I'm curious on your opinion and.
No, I mean, for me, I really just want somebody that's in the building that I can talk to, right? So when something comes, I can, you know, run upstairs or wherever they're at and just have a conversation and have them look at legal descriptions with me and make the best decision that's for that property owner and how we should maybe, you know, take a measured description with a record description together, and which Jeff has helped me with those things over time, you know, so really for me, I just would love to have somebody that I can, you know, have a quick conversation with and move forward to the next thing.
And what's the process now, are you?
No, I, I use Jeff.
Yeah.
I use Jeff, and he's been great and helpful, but, you know, there's been other people that have said they need one, and I thought, why not be one also that says it'd be a resource for me to have somebody in the building as well, and, you know, work as a team and have someone here that we can all use. So, do you have any other questions for me with that, or just?
I was gonna say, I think, could you tell some of the council, could you tell the council members in some ways how this is slowing down certain work within your office, just to highlight the?
Well, I mean, it's just, I mean, and this isn't really, I mean, I've never given a deadline to Jeff when I need a time, when he calls, you know, we have conversations, so it isn't, it isn't a fault of Jeff, it's just the convenience of not having somebody, you know, upstairs maybe, or wherever that might be, that I could just run up, have a quick question, and get an answer and move on.
Great.
Thanks, Tanille. Matt, do you want to come take a couple minutes?
Thanks, Council, I appreciate it. Matt Phillips, county engineer and the Public Works Director. The need for the county surveyor has been longstanding, if you remember, I've been asking for the council to approve a budget for a county surveyor for almost better part of two years, probably going on three years. It's, we, you can really break the county surveyor down into two positions. One would be something that is more of a office work, and one is more of a field work. What we have been asking for an in-house surveyor is to help with the office work. That would be to review the annexations, to review the subdivision plats, to help direction, to help Tanille, to help all those places. Keegan, you asked about maybe a percentage break off, I would say, if you looked at development services, that's probably going to be about forty percent of that surveyor's work is helping with subdivision plats. You're probably another forty percent in the Public Works Department, you're probably five to ten percent or less in the clerk and that, because those annexation plats can come to development services, that's where a lot of those things are getting reviewed, so the biggest departments that need the surveyor are development services and public works, that's where the majority of the survey work is done, similar to this, the county engineer, right? We don't, we don't pick favorites, we provide that service to the county regardless of where our office is, because that's, but that county engineer has that license, that, that, that has that licensing to make those decisions that can help the departments in any which way that they need. Currently, we do not have that P L S license of anyone in the county, so some of their certain decisions, certain type of state statute, that we need that P L S in here, and that can be a resource. So this isn't a new need, this is a need that's been out there for a long time. You know, I've been very adamant that it's not going to save us money, it's because that in-house office stuff that we can go ask questions for has just not been provided. The county hasn't asked for it, because we haven't had the budget to ask for it. I'm sure if we asked for it, we could probably get that service provided, but it's going to be in an expense, and, and that's just an expense that we haven't, we haven't been through, so I'm happy to answer any specific questions. I think the council is very aware, for the most of you, where I stand and, and where I feel like that person is probably best seated. I would encourage the people that are writing the code and to come and visit with us, to also have Public Works and Development Services involved in those discussions, more so than they have been as far as writing that code and how to, how to format that position, because that, those are going to be the heaviest users, so.
If I can ask a follow-up, where would you have them seated?
So probably the least expensive and the quickest we could get this person in would be as part of the Public Works Department under the engineering staff, similar to the other communities such as Logan. Most of those engineering and surveying services go hand in hand, that's probably going to be the easiest place. That's where ninety percent of that budget is already coming from, so that wouldn't require a lot of budget changes. That would be just adding that salary to that person into our budget, and the rest of that, that's where all the surveying expenses are currently paid out of, is the engineering budget, so.
And then to make sure I understand you, that would be primary office, primarily office work in nature, and it would not require a department, you're talking about an individual to fill the need?
I don't think it's in the best interest of the county to try to go out and hire staff to be able to handle field work, that's a lot of equipment, that's a lot of manpower, and to facilitate that type of work is way beyond what we're asking for, we're asking for just salary, or we have been for the last few years. If you wanted to create a department that could actually take care of field work, you're pushing a million dollars a year, and again, financially responsible, that's just, you know, if you hire a single department, you're probably going to have other expenses, secretary, there's, there's going to be expenses with the department that are going to be unforeseen, you're not just going to be able to pay someone, you know, who's going to, you know, help that person, where are they going to be? But naturally, the easiest slide in, in my opinion, and what I've been asking for for the last few years, is to bring that person under, into the engineering department as part of our staff, and then give that person the duties to go help these offices, just like this, just like the staff engineering does now, we help all the departments, we provide technical support to anyone who asks for it. We're non-biased, so I, I feel like we've done a good job of, of providing that service to the county, just like H R provides service to us, it's, so.
So are you saying, Matt, if we hire someone to do that office work and to be that support person, you're still going to need to contract with a field worker?
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay, to what extent?
That's been our goal, to currently provide about the equal services that we're getting. When we talk about delays, when Bryson talks about delays, he, he's not asking that guy to do any field survey work. A lot of that is topos for capital improvements, that's boundaries for properties the county owns, that's, that's these types of works that doesn't really involve a lot of the other departments, but it's, it's that office work of having someone there that can go to a development service meeting and talk to the public about why or why not their subdivision plat, it meets state code or is not state code, someone can come in, a developer can come in and ask to see the county surveyor. Tanille can walk upstairs and ask the county surveyor, hey, I'm having an issue with this boundary, can you give me your opinion? Bryson can walk upstairs and ask, that's what the county is missing, we're not missing the field work, right? We try to budget prudently to make sure that we're meeting the state code with, when it comes to providing section corner reviews, providing field work that's needed, and the rest of that is when we're doing capital projects, road reconstruction, procuring right-of-ways, those types of things, that stuff is hired out to a crew that is a lot larger than what we would be financially responsible for the county to try to have a full-on staff to provide those services, and frankly, we don't have enough work to keep a crew busy year-round, so that's better suited for a contracted type work.
Can I ask a naive and potentially controversial question? In your opinion, why do you think this has been met with opposition? Why hasn't this position been hired already, it's been bugging us about it for the last couple of years?
I think that part of it is just that the county's been trying to be financially conservative. I think they've tried to look into it and do their due diligence to find out, do we really need it before they grow the county, right? This is a full-time hire, it's not an entry-level position, this is a very experienced position, it's going to cost the county a lot of money, so there could be other things that I'm not aware of, or, but I think the county's just tried to do its due diligence in trying to figure. but I think the county's just tried to do its due diligence in trying to figure out, hey, you know, we need to take these things serious as we grow the government, and, you know, this is, you can't create and hire a position and then, you know, a few months later decide, yeah, that wasn't a great idea. It's, so it's easier to grow slow than it is to grow big and then try to cut, so.
Especially when the council was looking at a tax increase this year.
I also think that I appreciate Bryson and Tanil, because I think that it's been brought to a higher level with them actually supporting us, trying to get the surveyor and also coming forward saying, hey, we need, we need this person. It's good for the county, it's good for the public, and it's, and so it's been, you know, we've got, we're getting more attention now than we have in the last few years when we've come in for budget requests or budget openings, so.
So can I just ask a business to the council?
Thanks, Matt.
Yep.
So if we're asking for a surveyor, but we, I think there's ramifications. We still need to understand the titling this as a department head, cost, title, whatever. But rather than starting at a department head, if we're saying we need a surveyor, why can't we hire one, put him in some place, see how it works well? If we find out we need a department, we still have that ability down the road, rather than starting at this top and moving down.
I agree with Nolan.
That is the reason why this was advanced as a discussion point. As you can tell, there's a lot of factors in OMP. I mean, the reason I thought discussion was the right recommendation was because we, OMP wasn't going to get there without the help of additional perspective from the council as to something that would be a good fit to recommend to the council later.
I mean, we all represent departments, and we all should be talking to those departments, and whether we assign that division as far as percentages to, Andrew, I don't know about that, but I'm just saying, I agree with what Matt said. If you bring a surveyor on, he cannot fulfill all the duties of what we perceive a surveyor to do without an immense amount of a budget. We all know we're not ready to do that yet. So, starting in a position without a department head seems the way to start it, and we build into it rather than throwing a department head. And I think, with my wife having been an HR person, title demands money addition to what your position is. So that's my concern.
I think there was also some legalities, because state code says it should be an elected position. There's some nuances that go with that as well. And so I think that was, the department head was, discussion was a part of, how do we legally do this and meet, because we have an elected surveyor without a license, and so, anyway.
Yeah, either way, we're going to have to change the organic act to clean it up to what currently we have, as I understand it.
We'll have to make some legal changes to the Organic Act, either way.
Is that, is that true, Taylor?
Well, so ultimately, currently, our executive, Mr. Zuck, is our executive/surveyor. So any surveyor conversation that we're talking about right now would have to ultimately answer to the executive surveyor.
But this hiring, hiring a surveyor, just hiring one to do what we've talked, that doesn't throw us in, you know, as far as?
I would have to look at that more specifically if, if there is a piece of state code that somehow prohibits that. I would have, I'm, I'm not aware of something like that.
What Sandy was referring to is how the Organic Act refers to the surveyor as being a separate office. Is that what you're referring to?
Well, I think when the Organic Act was written, it was like when we had a clerk auditor. He fulfilled both of those roles, and then they combined the executive surveyor, which I don't, I don't know exactly what the thought process behind that was, but obviously.
They didn't clean it up with any type of legislation.
Yeah, they didn't make any qualifications, or, anyway. There, there just was some nuances there that we need to be aware of as we, as we go forward with this. Like, I don't think it matters in, in the big picture, we just need to make sure we are compliant with.
If the council is united and wants to, you know, push forward, for example, for hiring some, hiring a surveyor in the Public Works Department, changing the Organic Act is very simple, as long as you have the commensurate numbers of people who support it. Ultimately, as long as the surveyor answers, whoever the surveyor you hire, answers to our current elected surveyor, then my, my, what I think is it would probably be okay. I'm not aware of any state code that prohibits that, but we will definitely take a look and make sure that it proceeds in a legal way.
Madam Chair, one more thought on this. We did receive an email from Jeff, and his name was mentioned by a recorder. I think he could potentially have some insight. Would it be appropriate to ask him a few questions?
Thank you, Council, for inviting me up to speak. First of all, some of you guys know me, some of you don't. My name is Jeff Nielsen. Just a little bit of history. I am one of the deputy county surveyors that was mentioned before. However, I am not the one that drives up at $250 a month.
You don't drive Paradise down through Liberty, come back up through.
I don't do that. No, I don't do that.
Have a diesel.
Yeah, so, just a little bit of history. You know, my wife and I, we started foresight surveying in 2007 here in Logan. We've been based here ever since. In 2014, when the county surveyor's office was, was closed, I was one of the deputy county surveyors that was appointed at the time. And we've been doing that work every cent, ever since. I wanted to kind of talk just a little bit about, you know, I sent you guys an email earlier today. I wanted to know if you guys, first of all, had any questions about it. If you do, you know, feel free to, to ask, and I'll answer to the best of my abilities. Couple of things that I did want to mention. Matt did a pretty good job of explaining, you know, the cost that would be associated with, in my opinion, hiring, you know, a department head, because the first thing a department head is going to want is to have his own staff. I mean, that's just the way it is. And if it's, if it's a, a department head as a surveyor, he's probably going to want to have, you know, his own crew, his own equipment, his own, you know, everything like that. And so I think that, you know, eventually that would grow pretty quickly. But I do want to stress that I, I am very much in favor of the county hiring a surveyor. I think that the needs that Tanil and, and everyone has explained to date have been, you know, they're, they're real. And, you know, the county needs, they need that quicker turnaround than, than what's happening on, on some of the stuff. And so I want to emphasize that I really do support the county hiring a county surveyor. Matt sent me the, here a while back, he sent me the job description that was at one time being considered, and, you know, I redlined it and sent it back, and, you know, but I, I, one of the big things that I've continually said is that if you're going to hire a county surveyor, he better have a lot of experience, because, you know, the, the, some of the issues that come in front of the county are tough. You know, some of the section corner issues that we run into, they are hard, and they take a lot of experience. And, you know, sometimes it takes a lot of collaboration with other professionals to, to kind of get to the bottom of it. And so, you know, for, for those reasons, I think it would be a good idea to hire a county surveyor, because, you know, if, if they are hired, you know, they always have the ability to reach out to, to some of the local surveyors. I'm a deputy county surveyor, I was, I was sworn in. And so, you know, that, that ability to reach out to me, or for me to reach out to him, I think would be, you know, would be very beneficial to the county. Also, I kind of wanted to talk just a little bit about, you know, some of the costs, you know, that may potentially come if, if, when you guys do get a department in it. At some point, it will probably need to happen as the county continues to grow. But the last UACT meeting that I went to, that was about a year ago, one of the, the Salt Lake County Surveyor, he was giving his presentation, and he was talking about how he was so excited that they were finally going to get a LiDAR drone, which is a very expensive piece of equipment. That single piece of equipment is worth about $100,000. And he was so excited that he was going to get that LiDAR drone, because it was going to help him out so much. Well, I kind of chuckled, because we, we had one that we'd been providing services to the county with for about a year. And so, you know, we, we try to stay up on our equipment and stuff, but it's, and we make that equipment available to the county, but you guys don't have to cover, cover the overhead of it. So, you know, I think those are some of the reasons why I think it would be a good idea to hire somebody on staff, but probably not do a department head at this time.
Okay. Anybody have questions for Jeff?
Maybe the same question as Matt. Where would you house them if you have a recommendation? He suggested Public Works and Engineering.
Well, you know, in the private sector, you know, the, the companies are always surveying and engineering companies. And that is an organic fit, just because the fields are pretty closely related. There's some staff up in the engineering department that, that could coordinate with each other. The GIS mapping department, that's where all the surveys are stored currently. You know, that, that support would be pretty beneficial to a surveyor, so.
Jeff, you said if we hire someone, they better be good, they need to have experience. What do you think it would cost us to hire somebody of that quality?
Oh, that's, that's the million-dollar question, because, um.
Million dollars?
I hope not a million dollars, but, um.
Maybe ballpark even, like, it's not $50,000.
No.
Is it $100,000, is it $150,000?
To get a pretty good county surveyor, you're going to be looking at probably around $150,000 in salary. Benefits on top of that. So, it, it's not cheap. Yeah, it, it's just not cheap.
And you, you were in the surveyor's department when we had a department. How many staff?
I was not in the surveyor's department.
Or you, you were, I mean, you were a deputy surveyor.
I was a deputy surveyor when the department closed down.
When the department was here. How many people were in that department at the time, do you remember?
You know, I think there was, they had some part-time staff at the time, some summer help, but I think there was five full-time employees at the time.
Five full-time employees, and then how many contractor deputies?
No, so, so when the department was in place, they didn't, they didn't contract out surveying at all. It was all done in-house. But the cost of the service that was being provided was just getting prohibited. Some of you guys were probably around when, when that happened. And so everything was done in-house. They had quite a few, well, they had a few full-time employees, they had a few part-time employees. But, you know, some of the reasons why they closed it was, it was expensive, and their equipment was very old, needed to be updated, and that update was going to be really expensive, so.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you for that input.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so do we, I think we need to, we've got a lot of things to think about and discuss further. When does the OMP meet, again?
Its next meeting is actually going to be this Friday.
This Friday.
Are you planning to take that up?
We would change it to this Friday.
Are you planning to take that up and refine it, so they could come to us again if?
It's currently not on the agenda.
Yeah. I feel like we need more direction from what the council would want to maybe narrow or rule out. You know, right now, the, the options are hire at, in-house as a department head. Hire in-house, not as a department head, under an existing department. Continue to contract, but enhance the funding options to, you know, match the expediency or results or service level we, we feel we need if we feel the budget is the issue. Or the, or forth, or whatever I'm on here. Fat as close, stay where we're at. So we've got, we've got to narrow it down.
I'm in no favor of a department head right now until I see further evidence of how that would cost us. And I agree with what Jeff said, you get a department head, and it's going to grow. I think we need to start this as a hired-in-some area and see how it goes before we acknowledge ourselves, we've put in a thing that is going to grow.
I, I think we've got a level of professionals that they'll, I think we can work together. I think we can, you know, we can have, be available for those things. And, and even having a surveyor that, you know, that specifically kind of does certain things and is available so much time, and when, when this needs to be answered, that's the priority. Hire out everything else that we need to have done on, in the field or something, you know, just work, work that way. I think that it can be done with, within the, the services that we have. But it is critical that we get the right person in there, too, though. It is critical, experienced, and, and the right person.
Dave, just to restate what you said, you're talking across department, you don't see that being a conflict of interest or?
I would, I hope not. I, I, I think that every one of them are, you know, sometimes access is never fast enough. But it is a lot faster than having to try to get information down to Leighton and back, Kaysville, Leighton, wherever, you know, and back and forth that way. I think that, I think that things would be sped up quite a bit, just having someone in-house there.
And, and in addition to the, you know, physical separation, but you also have the priority or prerogative in-house, their focus is, what is the need of the county, period.
I wonder if we could designate where that office would be, like, if it was located in this building, so that it's, or, I don't know, I don't know if that could.
Before we can go there, we need to decide who has the biggest percentage draw use on it, I would think.
Well, Development Services is upstairs, right?
The, these are all operational questions. The, the real question here is, do we need to create a department, or is this just a budget amendment? The simplest solution to this is the one that Matt mentioned, that he has proposed a few times in recent years. And that's a budget amendment to his department, so he can hire somebody, and then operationally, you can figure out where that person needs to sit. Are they in the same place every day? Are they one day in one office, another day in a different one? What their hours are. All of those are operational issues. But the policy issue is whether or not this is, needs to be some kind of structural change to how we do things, or does he just need some money to hire a professional?
Yeah, so my feeling on that is policy, I think we're pretty well in consensus that a department is not the next step.
We can grow into that if we need to.
And I think the budget component of that, which is our next, you know, area of responsibility is, it's not, you know, it's, it's going to be a top fifteen position in the county, it sounds like. So I think the next thing is, where do we find the budget for that? And are we taking it away from areas that aren't as expedient? That's for us to figure out.
Madam Chair, I think also we're undermining the, it can be a department, but also the ultimate power, the, the size of that department lies with this body. Like, that's what we're saying, yeah, it could grow. It could grow if it comes with a budget request and we allow it to grow. Like, that's what it comes down to, because this is the body. They're requesting staff, they're requesting additional things. That comes before this body, and this body says, no. This department was always intended to be a department of one, to maintain neutrality. And that's, I think, what the whole pro is, is no man can serve two masters. I don't know if you've ever heard that. So that's what we're saying. And I do think we have good coordination and cooperation, as, as, as Dave is saying. But ultimately, it's that neutrality of that one individual is one department head, and then that is, they don't have a, maybe allegiance or anything to one. I'm, I'm not saying that we don't have cooperation. I, I'm not making any inferences here or anything like that. But that's the one advantage of that, and the growth of that is completely dependent on this body. This body is the one that says, no, this is a department of one, and it's always intended to be a department of one, until you can make a really good case of why there would need to be a crew or any additional staffing to that. So, I mean, I think, yeah, it has potential to grow, but also, anything has potential to grow. Ultimately, it comes down to this body approving that in, in budget.
And that's what we talked about, is you get a person there and you see if there's going to be that, and we try it before we open a department head, is all I'm saying. It, it just seems we started up here, rather than coming in here and seeing how it works as we adjust it.
It's just hard to share one staff member. I mean, I'm sure you've seen that in your line of work. You hire somebody, it's like, okay, you're going to help Human Resources, you're going to help this, and you're going to help this.
We ask our departments in the county to help each other all the time.
Yeah. There are certain functions and jobs that are easier to go cross-function, like usually accounting and HR will span multiple departments. And the nature of the work is such that it lends itself to shared responsibility.
And we're not going from zero to one. We're going from two to three, is how I view it. And even more than that, because we have Matt and his engineers, so there's already a team. And Jeff mentioned our GIS department. We have a team already, and, and the recorder's.
And the Recorder's Office, everybody does a piece of this work now. And we're not talking about just taking one person and putting all of that on that person's shoulders. We're talking about adding one more person to help join the team in carrying that load. And there is a department there already. The engineering division in the Public Works Department is where I think, I agree with Matt and with Jeff, that that makes the most sense, because that's how it's done across the country. Engineers and surveyors oftentimes work together. So, we're not talking about just adding one person. We're talking about, we're talking about augmenting an existing team with one more person.
The other thing I'll mention, too, is that we don't necessarily set the budget. We approve the budget, right? Like, we can invite the executive to come up with the numbers that make sense, and then we can approve or deny that, right? I mean, we don't have to bear that burden ourselves.
Yeah.
To Catherine's point, I'm totally in agreement that the neutrality is best accomplished through the department head structure and that it is up to what we fund will determine the size of the department. That's the realities with every, that's not a new challenge or a new reality. But we also aren't starting out with the budget would not be just the cost of one, like was just said in other ways. We're adding capacity to a service where what I'm hearing is we are underserving in that capacity as an organization. I think realities are that the neutrality is a little bit of why it feels underserved, and this person could coordinate better because they would be primarily focused on the needs of the county. So, I do believe that really the decision, at least for me, is department head. Or do we hire, but do we get, how much are we giving away on the neutrality? Is the challenge for me on why, how we structure this and why we needed this broader discussion beyond just OMP.
And ultimately, that person answers to the elected surveyor, the county executive, to me. And that's where that discussion should be at. If there's another elected official or another department head that says, I'm not getting the attention I need, I'm not getting the response I need, then they should come to me so that I can address that. Just like somebody, if they were having, if a department, multiple departments, every department's being served by Wes or Finance Director. If they have an issue with him, they go to his boss, the elected official who oversees him. And that's where that's dealt with. That's the appropriate place for that to be dealt with.
Personnel issues aren't a legislative function.
Yep.
Can I make a brief comment?
Sure.
So, just with the economy, too, I would just encourage you not necessarily to set up a full department, but take a slow step into it. You can always contract out certain things. And you might have an expert, say a surveyor, that can determine what should maybe go out and is easily done by a contractor and manage that process versus hiring two or three staff. Again, you wanna fill kind of the, with the ups and downs of the economy, you know, where you have more work, fill that with contract. And then when the work drops off, you don't have three employees that, and only one person that's fully working.
Yes. I hope that is perceived as in line with what I was saying. Wes, or, yeah, Wes said it much better than I did. But reality is, we're not starting off from zero, and now we will hire and have the cost of a surveyor. We're building on top of what we already do provide from the county through contract. We're just enhancing that by an in-house focus.
Yes, so it's not, it's not a total...
That's how I see this issue.
It's not an addition of totally new funds that weren't being allocated somewhere else in some other fashion. Yeah.
Okay, so, we're gonna send that back to you guys. I think, have you got a pretty good idea?
We gave you some pros and cons to add to your list, and you guys can weigh it out and bring it back to us.
And I liked Matt's idea of...
We were there before, but...
Yeah, I like Matt's idea of including Development Services and the Public Works in that discussion.
If Matt was present at the last meeting.
Matt, Tenille.
Tenille and Bryson, too?
Yeah.
Yeah, they were all in there.
Okay. All right, we'll continue that one. E, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fifteen.
I still have one question. Are you gonna be waiting then for an ordinance to come back or just...
Well...
A recommendation to draft an ordinance or not to draft an ordinance, I guess?
Or to just come with a budget opening? I don't know. What would you recommend?
Well, see, that's why we brought it here.
To either draft an ordinance or...
Yeah, whether we pursue the one department chair type system or if not, then it's just up to us to push it through into a budget hearing.
We, who asked for the budget opening if that's the way we go?
We create the position and...
Amy would have to like...
Well, to create that, we would need ordinance and stuff. But the expediency is a budget opening.
In June.
If this can all be done, if we choose to fund it, meaning, all be done, meaning the capacity is added. Because I'm getting back to that as the priority here for me, because we need capacity.
Yeah, you could give Amy right now, you could give, tell her, say yes, let's hire a surveyor.
I think she has that already.
I think she's prepared.
Well, you could tell her right now, and it's still gonna be, I think you're gonna hunt for one for, it might be six months before you find one.
So, it sounds like the majority of the council...
The one that we want.
It sounds like the majority would give you the direction to just hire somebody. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's my vote.
Yeah, I mean...
Stay away from the department head for now, because we can always create it and let it work, just as the executive said with the engineering group. I mean, the engineering group is helping in the other areas, just like the executive said. If there is a problem, they come to the executive and it becomes an organization and a personnel rather than a legislative body, so...
Okay.
That's my feeling, so...
Yeah, I think there's still concerns of adding to the budget and me understanding what it's, like, what, how much we're spending now contracting versus what this in-office job, what the difference in those numbers are and where that lands. I think if we just add to the budget without any consideration, it's not responsible, right?
I'm kind of torn both ways, but I mostly fallen under the idea that we don't start with a department head.
Well, we can also ask Amy the difference of what a title does as far as the salary and everything else versus hiring somebody in there.
Were you finishing what you're...
Okay, any more discussion about that? Do you feel like you have enough direction? OMP?
Talk about it.
Certainly, plenty to talk about, yes.
It's on the agenda now, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
We amend the agenda and have this discussion there.
Okay. All right, let's go to ten E. Andrew.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we just talk about this?
Yeah, what, is this different?
Uh, no, it is actually different, so...
Yeah, it's a different number.
So, the other one was a resolution, and this one is an ordinance. So, the first one that you guys considered dealt with the administrative code and just putting together and enacting a whole policy on contract process and management. This, if I remember correctly, is just amending a part of county code under chapter three, chapter three point one six, yeah. There are two changes that are being made to that part of county code as it relates to contracts. First off, it would just change up the nature, sorry, change up the language as it relates to including the provision in contracts that require payment to be made outside of a current fiscal year. So, right now, as I understand, there is a requirement for you to put in, I think it's every single contract, saying that if a county legislative body essentially doesn't allocate funds to a specific, whether that's a project or something that you've contracted out for, then that contract essentially can be exited out of without any repercussions, to my understanding, right, Taylor?
Yeah, Andrew, if I could speak to this, is that, those types of provisions are a safety valve for our departments. So, if there's, happens to be some kind of massive economic downturn or something and the county budget changes substantially, we don't want multi-year contracts, we don't want the county to be locked into multi-year contracts that may be unfeasible with changing budget conditions. So, if there are projects that require payment outside of the current fiscal year, so if it's a project that spans multiple years, this is making that change so that contracts contain a provision that are conditioned upon future legislative allocations only when those payments span multiple years. So, it doesn't make sense to include that provision in a contract where it's a single transaction, for example, or only lasting a single year. And so, I'll just jump right into the second one. The second one is removing the requirement to take out provisions that bind the county to mandatory arbitration. As the county, as the council knows, many of the departments contract with software companies. Many of the, many of the departments contract with vendors who are large corporations, and we use their services, we need their services. And many of these contracts include arbitration clauses. Now, when the county is negotiating with a vendor on a one-to-one basis and we're involved in the formation of those contracts, then it's absolutely feasible to include those sorts of, this type of provision where we want any future litigation to happen right here in Cache County at the First District Court. We try and keep that, those provisions in those types of contracts. But when we are engaging in contracts with software companies, for example, we are dealing with a contract that's a form contract, take it or leave it basis. The ability to negotiate and take provisions in and out is extremely limited. And so, there are contracts that the county has entered into that we need to enter into and in the future would like to enter into that do have arbitration provisions that we would likely be unable to negotiate out of and would not be able to access those services without taking that, this particular prohibition out. So, those are the two changes, just to make our current contracts legal under our county code and enable, or more flexibility for our department heads to contract with the vendors that they need in the future.
Do you think that's gonna affect the ability for us to make arrangements? Like, would a vendor be not as apt to enter into a contract with us knowing that we could get out of it if our finances change or that they don't have any security in the long term?
Sometimes, but legislative allocation clauses are very common across governments because of that. They know that budgets change, so they typically find security in other ways or they try and make it so that the contracts are new on a yearly basis so they aren't left holding the bag at the end of a long-term project.
But often, these contracts with government agencies are still a lot more secure and a lot more, have a lot more security than the contracts that people are making individually and they can walk away from it.
On the whole, the government is not very likely to default on its obligations, so...
Yeah, exactly. But, no, I think that's a good, I think it's a good thing.
Okay. All right. Does someone want to make a motion about that? We're into initial proposals still.
I would so move that we suspend the rules and that we pass ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fifteen.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed? All right, thank you, Andrew and Taylor. Okay, other business. Eleven A. Go ahead. Exercising advice and consent on nominations. Andrew, how long ago did we pass the Government Conduct Review Committee? Was that a resolution or an ordinance?
I believe it was under resolution either twenty twenty-five dash one or two, so within the first month of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so, we set up a Government Conduct Review Committee that is supposed to be appoint, there's five members appointed by the Executive's Office. One of those is supposed to be a council member, and so...
Let me see. Two council members, one's just regular member, and then there's an alternate.
And then one is an alternate. So, in talking to some of the council members, I would like to propose that we ask Barbara Tidwell to serve on that committee. That would be our recommendation to the executive. And then we need to have an alternate designated. If Barbara needs to recuse herself or if she's not available, does someone want to volunteer for that? Mark? I agree. What do you think, Mark?
You'd be really good.
I think...
As the backup?
Yeah.
You're the backup, so...
Long as Barbara's always gonna be here, except for today.
Yeah. Would you be okay with that? Okay, if that's okay with the Executive's Office, that's gonna be our recommendation and also with the urge, the urging to get the rest of that committee put together as quickly as possible.
Thank you for that input.
Okay, so, that is, okay, that's, I don't think we need to vote on that. That's just a recommendation. Okay, the UAC Board of Directors meeting, I will be there. The Management Conference, we know who's going to that. Health Day's Parade on May tenth in Smithfield is there. Do we know? We are registered for that, correct, Andrew?
Yep.
Is anyone able to be there?
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
Okay.
It's a good one.
Okay, so...
I'm sure that somebody else will make all those arrangements for a truck and some candy.
Not me, right?
I don't know where we're gonna get candy nowadays. It's...
I know, it's so expensive. We could throw quarters.
Cheaper.
We wouldn't hurt anybody.
Cheaper, there might be a lot of people that, young people that haven't seen that.
Yes. Okay. And then the emergency management training, that's gonna be a workshop with all of us out at the Sheriff's Department. Mark and Nolan and I were there last week when they kinda started getting into some of that and what, what things might happen and how the process works. And this will be specific to us. If there is some kind of a disaster, an emergency, what are our roles as county council members? Will said he's calling me first. I'm like, I'm on it.
Well, the purse.
I know.
You gotta call the money first.
I know, I know. So, anyway, we do have specific responsibilities that we will have as a, as a council members, I'm sure, executive...
Like, is it gonna be a scenario?
I don't know. I don't know exactly what they'll do, but it's, we need to have as many of us as there as possible.
He's actually put together kind of a little binder, maybe, there's a binder that he'll probably give to you, and it has a, Will does. And it's a...
Yeah. There, it was interesting. There was computers set up, you know, we've all seen that Situation Room. And like, our, our county treasurer has a computer, our Fairgrounds manager has a computer that's designated as their spot to gather in the time of an emergency. And then we have a Situation Room in the back where the council would be making other different kinds of decisions. It's all, it's all really interesting and hopefully we never need it. But if there's something that happens, we wanna be prepared, so...
Are they invited, too, the other elected officials?
I don't think so. They were there, they were, they were all invited last week. There wasn't a lot of them there, but I think they were invited. I don't know. We can, we could find out. I don't know if Will just wants to speak to us specifically or if he wants more people there. I'll find out.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, council member reports. Let's go home. Keegan.
Yeah.
No pressure, but...
Yeah, yeah, we'll make it quick. So, attended the Audit Committee. Accepted a nomination to chair that committee, so...
I think I'll be ready.
Yeah. Trails Cache, so reminder Bike to Work Week is the third week in May, so I think that starts on the twelfth. So, day two of that will be council meeting night, so I challenge you to ride your bike to council meeting that night.
Yeah, that's not gonna happen. In my heels.
I was gonna say, that's not fair.
You let me know when you go past Dave, and I'll leave him.
There's not enough juice in an e-bike to get that far.
I live about a mile from here, so, but that's totally unrelated to that challenge. And then the Airport Board, we, they had an open house. I think I mentioned that last time. We attended that. That had the future plans for air traffic control, for more refueling, a bunch of different things. So, if you haven't seen that, check it out. Who knows how many years ahead that could be, but there is a plan. So, if we ever do get grant money, we can show that we would know how to spend it. That's all.
Nothing.
Nothing other than, just yesterday, we had the RAPS committee. That was a lot.
Huge.
Yeah, that was really big, and we're excited to bring those recommendations to you. And today, the Fire Board was pretty detailed. Well, we've got a lot of work to do there.
Okay, Dave?
I think Catherine said it well.
Yeah.
RAPS and Fire Board, so...
Two biggies.
Yeah, there's a little, little bit of sweat that was, came out on foreheads on, on those, so.
Yeah.
They're, we'll get through it, we will.
Mark?
As was mentioned, we had the audit committee, which I'm interested to get going and learn how much that really will entail, but our agenda item following the, the discussion on chair appointment was to set the trajectory for hiring or selecting the new auditor, you know, financial auditor going forward, independent financial auditor, because we roll that over every five years. We're already extended a little bit on our current providers, so for next year, there will be either a new auditor or a renewal with, with the current person, current entity, but that will be discussed in the future. And then there's just a little conversations going on that will come before the council soon, but we are talking about getting in place a new current contract with the library board and the arrangements there with the entities involved of Providence City and River Heights City and Cache County. And there will be some decisions and discussion coming forward to this group over the next couple of months. I may have already put you on notice for that, but I'll just remind you that that's still ongoing. I think that's it, Cindy.
Okay, I, um, audit committee and I went to the emergency training. I spent last week on the, the, I can't remember what, the 11th was the BRAG aging and veterans caregiver conference. I spent that day there. They do a lot for, BRAG offers so many services to our community, that was a great day to be there. Monday, I was at a Bay River Health Department Needs Assessment meeting. They had done a lot of surveys and they've got a lot of great information, a lot of what was in here, but they presented it to, to a discussion group. And then today, Catherine and I had lunch with Blake Moore and got to talk to him a little bit and that was good.
Other than that?
So thank you all for being here. Do I give a motion to adjourn?
No, it's.